Welcome to what promises to be a robust and interesting and varied night of public hearings. So, thank you all for taking the time to come and speak to us. I don't have my pile of sheets left yet, but I'm understanding and looking at the crowd that there are over 60 of you. And so, in order to move this along, I am going to reduce the speaking time to two minutes. So, I apologize to those of you who have carefully timed yours out for three minutes, but that's the way we'll get through. So, I need the sheets, but I'll read the... I need to see who has signed up first. So, I'll open the first one as a public hearing. An ordinance providing for withdrawal of annexed properties from the following special districts: The Santa Clara Rural Fire Protection District, Santa Clara Water District, Willikenzie Rural Fire Protection District, Lane Fire Authority, River Road Park and Recreation District, and River Road Water District. So, manager?
Thank you, Mayor. The purpose of this public hearing is to hear any comments on the proposed withdrawal of annexed properties from special service districts. These withdrawals came before the council, come before the council on an annual basis. This year, the batch contains seven annexations approved by the city council in 2018 for a total of 10 tax lots. Timing for adoption of the ordinance is critical. State statutes provide that any properties to be withdrawn must be approved by March 31, 2019. Otherwise, these properties will remain on the tax rolls of special service districts for an additional year. Council action is scheduled for February 25.
Thank you, and I understand that we have no one signed up for this public hearing. So, that's open and closed. We'll close that hearing, and I will now open the next hearing, which is an ordinance concerning nuisances, amending sections 6.005 and 6.010 of the Eugene Code 1971, and adding section 6.116 to that code. Manager?
This public hearing provides an opportunity for the public to give feedback to the Eugene City Council on proposed changes to the city's nuisance code. The proposed code language would address the impacts to neighborhoods caused by abandoned and derelict properties, as well as nuisance odors related to the growing and processing marijuana, especially in residential neighborhoods. Council is tentatively scheduled to take action on March 11.
Okay, so, I'll just review the rules here. Those wishing to speak during the public hearing must submit a completed request to speak form to the information desk prior to the beginning of the public hearing. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known. You will have two minutes to comment. There are lights on the timer. The red light indicates the end of the two minutes, and I will read two names at a time so the second name can, person can sit in the warm-up seat so that we can move along smoothly. We have seven speakers on this, for this public hearing, and just a reminder, it's a packed house. Please be respectful of anyone who is speaking. We ask for no verbal outbursts. You can always show your approval by waving your fingers, and otherwise, we want to make sure that people feel safe and comfortable saying what they have come here to say. And so, with that, our first speaker is Sean Winter, followed by John Fieldking.
I am a local small business owner. I live in Eugene in Solanco's Ward, and I would like to speak against the nuisance ordinance. I think it will bring an undue burden on renters who, by definition, don't own the property that they live in. I think it's unnecessary. It's invasive. I also think that if the city wants to consider nuisances, it should probably look downtown at the many abandoned and empty parking lots that litter our city and make it look like suburban sprawl at its worst. I think we need to work really hard on densifying the city, getting rid of these abandoned lots, especially given our homeless and housing issues. We need to do something, anything, with these abandoned lots, and I think that the owners of these abandoned parking lots are the people and businesses who should be getting nuisance violations and not renters and homeowners who live in our communities. Also, for the record, I just want to take 10 seconds to say that I think that we should be allowed to applaud when we agree with things that are happening. I know these things are being videotaped for posterity and for people who can't be here at the time, and I think it's important for people watching the video to be able to understand the mood of the room and the people that are listening to it, and I think that it is possible to have audible feedback that isn't wholly disruptive. And I think you should allow some amount of applause or response that doesn't totally derail the meeting so that people watching the video can get a feel for what it's really like here. Thank you.
Thank you. John Fieldking, followed by Misha Seymour.
John Fieldking, Ward 1. The nuisance ordinance expansion looks to me like an attempt to turn the whole city of Eugene into one giant homeowners' association. Red and mice infestations are a problem for many homeowners, not just the ones at the bottom of trash-filled yards that the health inspector from the Eugene Nanny State might want to write a ticket for. I have a relative who lives in a condo that is as clean on the inside as a local hospital, and she regularly sees signs of rats in the garage. Would you sanction her if this ordinance were affecting her community? It looks to me like the nuisance ordinance is just an excuse to drive poor people out of small problems with their ability to maintain their properties out of the city. For many of these people, including myself and the residents I've occupied over the past few decades, these places are the last places of refuge before the people living there were being cast out onto the streets. If any of you in the audience are opposed to the adoption of this nuisance ordinance expansion, please stand up.
Or wave your hands.
Okay, I also asked the 60 or so people who contacted on my often list to please wear red or yellow to show their opposition. I have over 70 names on the portion of the petition against the nuisance ordinance expansion that I personally circulated. I will hand these originals to you now. It is possible that other people on attendance tonight have also had people sign the copies that they have. Thank you.
Thank you. Misha Seymour, followed by, there's no name on this one, by Eric King?
King, yeah.
Eric King.
I agree with what the last speaker said.
Would you introduce yourself?
My name is Misha Seymour, living Eugene, and in terms of, I mean, I think it's a bad idea. In terms of what a nuisance is, though, is walking around the capstone project that's sidewalk where they use substandard concrete. The city, the city did, I mean, 14 million bucks, tax break for that, and when I walk around there, I'm almost falling down all the time because they use substandard concrete there on the sidewalk. I mean, that's a nuisance. What were these, what were these things? Okay, Eugene radio stations were probably where years ago when there was a flood, people said people are there to help one another. And the other thing, but, you know, I was reading like some of the happiest places in the world, like Thailand, where people are there for one another. And the other thing about the nuisance ordinance, I know someone like before, and the family, there was, the neighborhood was saying, the family has a lot of stuff outside the place, and it's a hassle and everything, and they wound up driving those people out of their place. To me, that is like fascism. What they should have done is come together and help the neighbor. Somebody was coming to the city council meeting at that time, Nick Antone Jr., he was coming to the city council meeting, and he said he wanted help. You don't want help he got? Nothing. They got crucified, and I think there's a lot of things we could do better. There's a lot of nuisance, and the nuisance is like giving tax breaks to developers is a big nuisance, ripping off us here in this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric King? Eric King? No? Okay. David Stran? Oh, okay, all right. So, we'll put that aside, too. Okay. Tracy Jocelyn?
Tracy's here.
They all meant to do the panhandling one. Okay, all right, I'm going to set these aside for later, but that's, so that's the last. So, Tracy and David are coming in the next round. Okay, so, I think that ends the public, except for, well, there is no name on that one, so this was in a state of confusion, this pile, but any council comments on anything you've heard? All right, that closes that public hearing, and now we are on to the next one, which is an ordinance concerning imposition of a construction excise tax on commercial and residential improvements and adding sections 3.730, 3.732, 3.734, 3.736, 3.738, 3.740, 3.742, 3.744, 3.746, and 3.748 to the Eugene Code 1971. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. City council has had a number of conversations on options for a local construction excise tax dating back to April of 2017. Since that time, staff have worked with the Housing Policy Board and other community stakeholders to craft a CET that will provide a local source of funding for affordable housing and is responsive to concerns about its impact on the building community. In January, council provided direction to create a draft CET ordinance and schedule a public hearing. Action on the proposed ordinance is scheduled for April 8. Key elements of the draft ordinance are: a 0.33% tax rate effective July 1 of 2019, 0.50 tax rate effective July 1, 2020, 1% tax rate effective July 1, 2021. The CET rate would apply to residential and commercial types of construction. In addition to state mandated exemptions, the following would be exempted from the CET: affordable housing projects, projects receiving a multi-unit property tax exemption, and houses priced at less than $250,000. It establishes an advisory committee to recommend CET allocations. The total CET imposed on any single or multi-phase project would be capped at $1 million. During the first two years, July 19 to June 30, 2021, the city will offset the cost of the CET paid by an applicant by an equivalent reduction of SDCs. During the first two years, we designate city funds equivalent to the reduction of SDCs to the appropriate SDC fund. We designate, the proposed ordinance designates $500,000 per year of city funds to the Affordable Housing Fund, and the council would be required to review the program every two years, beginning in 2021.
Thank you. We have, oh, I guess I need to formally read this. Those wishing to speak during the public hearing must submit a completed request to speak form prior to the beginning of the public hearing. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known. You will have two minutes to comment. There are lights on the timer. The red light indicates the end of your two minutes, and we have 34 people signed up to speak. So, again, remember, there's a warm-up seat for the second name so we can move through promptly. First up is R.S. Self, followed by Tiffany Edwards.
Thank you for giving me a few moments here. Respectfully, in regards to both consideration of the CET and the tax report that you're considering come the 1st of May, I just wanted the council to take note that there is a lot of affordable housing already out there. However, due to the standards set primarily by two large property management companies, the criteria to get into such places is near impossible for the sheltered, let alone the unhoused. Endless application fees, the need to have the credit score of a loan officer, having to have three times income of the rental amount, and so on, make it unfeasible and unreasonable for even most sheltered folks just trying to move. And I speak from experience, having to do this with a Section 8 voucher. There should be one central place or an app to apply to all landlords and property management companies, and one-time application fee charged. This is only coffee money anyhow. So, we, of course, I'm not against building any affordable housing. That certainly is a need, but we may not need to build as much as we think because there's a lot already. I ask we change the process and make the affordable housing that exists obtainable as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Tiffany Edwards, followed by Daniel Hill.
Good evening, Mayor Venice, members of council. I'm Tiffany Edwards, and I was a steering committee, or I am a steering committee member of Better Housing Together, and was a participant of the Housing Tools and Strategies Work Group, serving on both of those on behalf of the Eugene Area Chamber of Commerce. The chamber supports the recommended ordinance for a construction excise tax that came before council on December 10 of last year. It phased into a 0.5% CET by 2020, and I'd like to share three main points as to why we support this policy. Number one, this policy earned broad support through a process of community partnership. This process was not easy, and it involved many stakeholders, specifically those who would be paying this tax, but in addition, those who would also stand to benefit from the proceeds. Number two, the most recent data that we have available tells us that our current housing options do not match our housing needs, and building more missing middle housing is critical. A 1% CET threatens the financial feasibility of these housing types and ignores the larger issue of housing affordability. And number three, we have a lot of community needs requiring funds. We just increased property taxes to pay for parks and schools, and SDCs to fund transportation initiatives, and the chamber supported those efforts. Now, we have more needs: public safety, a new courthouse, a homeless shelter, homelessness services, and we know a statewide tax on business is imminent. We'd like to see the city do its part under council's leadership to prioritize removing barriers and bringing down the cost to development, then evaluating the CET in two years, and make a more timely decision about increasing it to 1% when we have more current relevant information to assess that option. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Hill, followed by Thomas Walter.
Hello, my name is Daniel Hill. I actually live in Springfield. I'm with the Arbor South Companies. We are architects, builders, and developers. I've been intimately involved in housing in Eugene for well over four years, developing, designing, and building award-winning infill housing, now referred to as missing middle housing. Our companies are passionate about providing well-designed, well-built, sustainable housing. I'm here tonight as a small business owner in our community and as a member of the Housing Tools and Strategies Committee. In 2006, as president of the Home Builders Association, we met with Mayor Piercy and other leaders expressing our concerns over the direction of housing policies in the city. We predicted the very problems that we now face today, an affordable housing crisis that has very little chance of being solved. These barriers include: lack of affordable residential land, problematic infill lots with inadequate infrastructure, slope, soil, and tree issues, neighborhood resistance, onerous regulations which include erosion control, stormwater, code restrictions, adjustment reviews, and unending processes, unchecked SDCs and eWeb fees that have nearly tripled since the Great Recession. I'm here tonight to say while I support the majority of the work done by our committee, I'm not in favor of any tax on housing. Housing is a necessity for all of us, regardless of price. This CET is a sales tax that will be passed on to the consumer, making affordability that much further out of reach for many in our community. I am passionate about helping those that are underserved in our community by being the lead architect on Emerald Village, Eugene, with Square One Villages. I have also built hundreds of homes in third-world countries over the years. I'm sympathetic to the nonprofits for vying for the CET money and to leverage it. I'm also here to say that government-funded housing is the least affordable housing bill, now approaching over $220,000 per unit. Thank you.
Thank you.
I also posted this to all of you, so please read the rest of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thomas Walter, followed by Ed McMahon.
Good evening, I'm Tom Walter, and I live in Eugene. I'm currently the president of the Local Home Builders Association. I've been active in terms of building in Eugene since the 80s and have been involved in probably 12 different land developments and over 500 houses. I know the Home Builders Association has tried to meet with members of council to talk about the impacts of all costs that are having on our industry, and it's really an industry under siege. We have a supply problem with housing on every level in this community, and anything we can do to promote housing that's for profit really is a benefit to the community because just more front doors, more places for people to live. So, statistics came out a couple weeks ago on the Register Guard showing that housing starts were down about 30% from 2017 to 2018, and this is what we talked about, that it is so difficult for people in my business to make money to build houses. We've seen a 30% decline in what should be an absolute boom in housing. So, we talk about $5,000 more, and what could that mean? It is meaningful. We've seen increase in costs that have driven builders out of business, driven developers out of business, and, you know, some big-name builders have just left the area in the last two years, and this should be the best of times. So, from the Home Builders Association, we tried to participate in this process and get behind the city manager's proposal. The most recent change to that proposal, we will not support as an association. Personally, I'm not accept, I can't accept any sales tax on housing because I think it's counterproductive to, you know, my mission to build houses. And so, we just hope that the council can look seriously about, at all housing, and we're advocates for all housing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ed McMahon, followed by Carolyn Jacobs.
Good evening, Mayor, councilors. Ed McMahon, Executive Director, Home Builders Association of Lane County at 1065 River Road. Although we continue to believe the CET is detrimental to homeownership, we realize the city manager's original recommendation represents an equitable compromise to the situation we all find ourselves in. I ask that you recall a March 4, 2018 Register Guard guest viewpoint from Tim Dewey, a man we all know and respect. I'd like to quote one thing that he wrote in that editorial. "Raising the cost of new construction will not solve the housing crisis. The Eugene City Council should be doing the opposite and lowering costs." Well, if the city manager's original recommendation is approved, the increased cost of the CET would be offset by an equivalent reduction in SDCs, at least to break even. We appreciate all the efforts currently underway to explore more ways to reduce the barriers in the cost of housing. We understand it's going to take some time, but we have two years to explore all the possibilities. The HBA looks forward to participating with Housing Tools and Strategies and Better Housing Together in finding more solutions to our housing crisis. Let us continue our work and review the results in 2021. That's the appropriate time to review and consider what should happen in the third year. I'm requesting that you approve the city manager's original recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Carolyn Jacobs, followed by Karen Knutson.
Carolyn Jacobs, Ward 3. The so-called construction excise tax, as proposed to city council, is not what it seems. It's neither to be paid by the construction industry, nor is it a tax, and it's not new money, which is what a CET is supposed to be and how it works in other cities. The construction industry here has refused to pay 0.3% as proposed for the first year, refused to pay 0.5% for the second year. There's no way, if they don't like 0.3 and they don't like 0.5, that they're going to willingly sign on to 1% after two years. We'd be fooling ourselves to think that. The proposal actually says that the money will be taken from the general fund, about 1.5 million the first year, 2.5 the second year, and close to 3.5 the third year, and presumably continuing after yet that. There's certainly no surplus of money in the general fund, so something will go unfunded when the millions are removed. If there was a surplus money, we assume Eugene would have been subsidizing low-income housing already. I fully support citywide efforts to address the need to begin funding housing for low-income people, but this proposal is dishonest in its attempt to disguise a wink to developers paid for by property taxes which make up the general fund. If the public's paying for this, at least give us credit for it. We're not fooled into thinking that builders will contribute to a low-income housing fund if we just wait, and more importantly, we know that this is not new money, which is what defines a construction income excise tax. But we deserve better from our government. I urge you to only support a real and honest CET, and also maybe exclude the housing below $300,000 or $350,000. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Knutson, followed by Bill Aspergrun.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. I'm Karen Knutson from Ward 3, local architect and urban designer instructor at the University of Oregon School of Architecture and the Environment, and speaking tonight as the project lead for Better Housing Together. Better Housing Together is a collaborative effort of now more than 50 local partners working together to increase the affordability, diversity, and supply of housing in this community. We are working together every week on this challenge together. I'm here this evening to share Better Housing Together's support for the creation of Eugene's diversified... Diversified Affordable Housing Fund, as described in the original city manager's recommendation. This fund would include 0.5% CET by 2020 and an annual contribution to diversify the fund, in addition to several other supporting points. As a collaborative and community-led effort, we understand this action is one of several important steps needed to address the local housing crisis, and I ask that you consider three other key points. One is that the Affordable Housing Fund will be more productive if it is implemented with broad support, if we take this step together. It's important that we take major policy steps together as a community and that we remember them as things that we did together and that we supported. There's no need to continually refight the same battles every year or every couple of years. A lot of partners have worked together over many months to build support for this recommendation, and I hope it's apparent that that work hasn't been easy. These are not usual partnerships, and it's not a usual coalition of voices and stakeholders that are coming together. So please respect the effort that they have put forward to try to find consensus and support this new fund. We also need workforce housing and missing middle housing, and the city's own economic analysis recently confirmed that the 1% CET will make these types of smaller housing economically infeasible, and we support a thorough thoughtful review in two years. Please support the proposal with broad community support.
Thank you. Bill Aspergrin, followed by David Monk.
I'm Bill Aspergrin, Ward 3, here in Eugene. I believe Eugene has two major problems affecting housing. One, a lack of housing for families with an income that is at or below 80% of area median income, AMI, most of which are cost burden or extremely cost burden. And secondly, unhoused individuals and families. These are priority problems and need our help in the form of affordable housing. Yet building this type of housing requires a subsidy, which means finding a new source of revenue. The construction excise tax, CET, is an excellent way to raise and leverage money for these subsidies. However, the proposed CET does not create any additional revenue. It just moves money from one pocket to another. Sure, a fund is created to help solve our problems, but no additional revenue is created. I support the CET and can live with phasing the CET to 1%, and I think a $500,000 contribution from the taxpayers is reasonable. I would raise a single-family CET exemption to at least $300,000, and I would eliminate the $1 million single-project cap. I don't think you're going to see much of that anyhow. However, I do not support subsidizing system development charges so developers can pretend to pay a CET. It's just unacceptable. I don't buy that this proposal will get the developers used to paying a CET. I think that's baloney, okay? Developers pay nothing extra. And in two years, the program will be evaluated and the CET will increase to 1%. What incentive would developers have to start paying a 1% tax with no subsidies? I bet it wouldn't happen. Okay, I have some other things. I'll just turn this in. I'd like it to be part of the record.
Thank you. David Monk, followed by Phyllis Hockley.
David Monk, Ward 2 resident. Let's see, I would say that any time for me that I'm in league with the Chamber of Commerce and home builders, I think the proposal in front of you is fatally flawed. I think you've really got to go back and look at this. What I'm hearing from those individuals who've spoken earlier, and I will say for myself, and I think that most of us here are wholly supportive of the city finding revenue to fund affordable housing. We all recognize the problem we have, so clearly we should be doing that, and as was said, that money's coming out of the general fund for this first three years in any case. So let's do that, but let's not pretend that this is a construction excise tax that's going to be funding affordable housing. So for me, I think what you're, if you go forward with this, I think what you're doing is you're undermining your ability to collect or to pass future revenue. You're looking at a payroll tax. There are many needs in this city, and you're undermining the trust and acceptance of the public when you propose these kinds of things. So please, take this back to your drawing board, reconsider. I think perhaps that proposal that was first put on the board, put on the table, might be a way for you to go, but don't pretend that this CET is anything more than just a rate on the general fund. Thanks.
Thank you. Phyllis Hockley, followed by Seda Collier.
Phyllis Hockley, and I'm in Claire's Ward. And I'm speaking for a local organization called Church Women United. We are women from 15 different congregations here in the Eugene area, and we have four goals, and one of them is work for a just, peaceful, and caring society. So Church Women United has come out in favor of the construction excise tax to fund affordable housing units in the city because we feel we need to support a tax that we see is a way to help this community create a just, peaceful, and caring society. I was at the Egan Warming Center Sunday morning at our church, and after breakfast, my job was to connect all of these homeless people with their backpacks. We have them put them all in a room downstairs, and then they all go upstairs to sleep. And then they come down in the morning to pick them back up. And I found out not only did they have backpacks, but they had big, black, plastic bags filled with cans, hopefully enough to support them through the day. And then, when we had pretty much got them all connected, I stood at the door, giving them a bus pass. And then I also helped one of the men that was homeless get out the door. We care. And...
Thank you. Thank you.
Caring is not cheap. Thank you.
Thank you. Seda Collier, followed by Michael Gannon.
Good evening, my name is Seda Collier, and I live in and own a house in Ward 2. In the interest of disclosure, I am an employee of the City of Eugene in Building Permit Services. However, tonight I am speaking solely as a resident and homeowner in Eugene. And the City of Eugene has embraced a lot of worthwhile goals such as addressing climate change and affordable housing and so forth. We've adopted some really helpful tools, such as a triple bottom line. 10 years ago, Building Permit Services created a green building incentive program. Almost nobody has heard of it because it has absolutely no teeth. There is no real benefit that homeowners can get or developers can get from this program. It just doesn't have enough incentive to it. So this, to me, this construction excise tax is an opportunity to actually give that program some teeth, if it were added in as an additional exemption to those that are already enumerated. So I would encourage the council to add an exemption for projects that meet the criteria and can be approved under the green building incentive program. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Gannon, followed by Celine Swenson-Harris.
Hi, I'm glad to be here. Thanks for having public testimony. I live in Eugene in Ward 1, I believe it is. I'm disappointed in the discussion about the CET tax because I think it is complicated for everyone, and it kind of becomes a way of ignoring the significance of the problem facing this community for suitable housing for all kinds of people. I think the 0.33 number for the first year is particularly a good example of, oh, it's not yet a crisis yet, so let's practice before we have a crisis, but we already have a crisis in housing. And I think that it's important for the council to look more aggressively at some other ways of changing the housing situation. One that I don't think we've talked about would be a tax on tearing down a suitable housing in the City of Eugene in order to build super housing, or as some people call them, McMansions. We're ignoring the extent to which the rapid increase in value in Eugene is going to wrench the city economically, and we've seen that happen in several California cities, and I don't see the council studying those cities to see what's happened. But clearly, it's possible for somebody to go into Eugene, for example, and build a McMansion and tear down housing in order to do that. So, and the other part of that is that we could have not only a luxury tax on those houses, but a tax on tearing them down because of the environmental destruction that's involved with the way we tear down houses.
Thank you. Thank you. Celine Swenson-Harris, followed by Kim R. Scott.
Hello, Mayor Viness and members of the council. My name is Celine Swenson-Harris. I'm actually a resident of Springfield these days, but I'm here in my capacity as Secretary of the Democratic Party of Lane County. And I'm here tonight to express support for a construction excise tax in the amount of 1% on new construction. As you all know, our community has been involved in a long conversation on the issue of housing affordability, and one of the points that comes up again and again as we talk about this is the lack of available affordable units for low-income folks to be able to rent. And so I think that one of the things that we need to look at is what are the tools available to us in our toolbox to make this city a place where that housing is available? Somebody who grew up in Eugene, I know that we value inclusivity. I know that we value this being a place where even the most vulnerable members of our community are able to afford a place to live. And I think that a construction excise tax is an option for us, among other options, but it is one tool that we should be using to provide affordable housing to make Eugene a better place to live and work. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim R. Scott, followed by John, followed by John Van Lanningham.
Partnership Matters, the City Manager Original CET Recommendations has broad support from nonprofit and business, and this support is valuable. We should take important steps together. We need a CET that doesn't make middle-income housing infeasible. The city's economic report found that 1% of the proposal will make the most missing middle housing more energy-efficient, walkable, and affordable homes for working families economically infeasible. The report indicates that these units can still be built at 5%. We will need to review in two years, the required review in two years, 2021, is the right time to review the implemented CET. Between now and then, we have an opportunity to remove barriers to housing affordability and design programs that will effectively leverage funds. Thank you.
Thank you. John Van Lanningham, followed by Kevin Cronin.
John, can you put that microphone, aim it down just a little? There you go. Just...
That's better.
It does feedback when it shoots up at the ceiling.
Okay, good. Thank you, Mayor and councilors. My name is John Van Lanningham. I work as a lawyer for Oregon Law Center in Lane County Legal Aid. I live in Ward 7. I want to make two points. The entire West Coast is experiencing a housing crisis, not just here, but all over the West Coast, and advocates and legislators in all three states are taking a three-pronged approach: tenant protections, which is my day job, increasing the supply of all housing, market-rate housing, missing middle, infill, addressing barriers to development of housing, and third, supply of affordable housing. The latter takes subsidy. I've been a longtime proponent of a construction excise tax at the legislature and with the city, and at 1%. I'm now here tonight to encourage you to adopt the Better Housing Together compromise of 0.3 and 0.5, not 1%. I do that because I want to encourage, I want to encourage, home builders and the chamber to work collaboratively with the city and affordable housing advocates to address the other two prongs. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Cronin, followed by Anna Peña.
Mayor and councilors, my name is Kevin Cronin. I live in Eugene, Ward 1. I've lived in Eugene for a decade and work full-time as a consultant. I'm here today as a renter and a tenant advocate. I have people call me every single day who struggle to find affordable housing. In the previous two years, I've had three folks stay on my couch while they applied for housing. They had a job, savings, and our city failed to meet their needs. I support the CET, specifically the proposal by Councilors Zelenka and Claire Soret. I believe it's a reasonable, measured approach. It phases in over time. In 2006, the City of Bend passed a construction excise tax. The sky did not fall. They have a proven track record of success. Over 615 new affordable units were created. The time to act is now. Please vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anna Peña, followed by Emily Mooney.
Good evening, my name is Anna Peña, and I live in Ward 3. I'm a student at the University of Oregon and a full-time employee, and I'm here today because in 2019, everyone deserves a place to call home. I know what it's like to struggle to find affordable housing. I work 40 hours a week while going to school, just to have a safe place to sleep. I've personally experienced and watched my friends experience trouble finding housing in a place with low vacancy. The City of Eugene estimates a CET in the amount of 1%, which will generate $3 million per year for affordable housing. That's a lot of places for people to call home. This is why I'm here asking for you to vote yes for 1%, so that students like me don't have to struggle to find housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Emily Mooney, followed by Chris Wig.
Thank you, Mayor and city councilors, for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Emily Mooney, and I live in Ward 5. I'm here to ask that you pass the CET to fund affordable housing in Eugene. As a young renter, I am very familiar with the city's lack of affordable housing, and still I am very privileged that I, unlike many of my friends like Anna who just spoke, have not been no cause evicted. After reading the details of the excess excise tax, I do not understand how you can walk away from this proposal and still have a good conscience. The tax will be paid by people who can afford it and benefit families who cannot. When I learned that council delayed on passing this common sense tax, it made me feel as though the voices of the powerful were more important than the voices of your constituents. I hope personally, I have personally spent more hours than I can count volunteering on campaigns for numerous elected officials in this city, hoping that you will do the right thing. And tonight, in front of you, you have the opportunity and the power to do the right thing. Working families in Eugene are counting on you. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Wig, followed by Matthew Katz.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. My name is Chris Wig. I live in Springfield now, but I serve as Chair of the Democratic Party of Lane County, located in Councilor Zelenka's Ward 3, and I serve with Councilor Pryor on the Housing Policy Board. And I am here tonight, I'm here tonight to ask you not to let the perfect be the enemy of the good. We've heard a death by a thousand cuts, that it's too much, that it's not enough, that we need to phase it in longer, we need to wait to reevaluate, and I would encourage you to pass a CET right now, and I would encourage you to pass it, that will help the greatest amount of people, and that that is in the amount of 1%. The difference between 0.5, which will raise 1.5 million, and 1%, which will raise 3 million, that's double the money, which means that is double the families that you can help. And I would implore you, when you think about numbers regarding these proposals, that the number that you consider is not the number of the bank account of the people who are profiting on building housing, it is the number of families of your constituents that will be helped by this tax. The Democratic Party of Lane County stands firm behind the 1% proposal offered by Councilors Zelenka and Soret. Please do the right thing. Your constituents are counting on you.
Thank you. Matthew Katz, followed by Stephen Carson.
My name is Matthew Katz. I go to the University of Oregon. I go to the University of Oregon, and at the University of Oregon, I work as a student ambassador, so I give tours to students there and prospective families. And a lot of times, I get questions from parents and students about the homeless problem in Eugene and whether or not Eugene is doing something to help better that and help the people that live here. And I like to tell people that the city of Eugene and our city council likes, like, is working to better the city of Eugene and to help the people who are in those difficult positions to find housing. And if you fail to pass the CET tax yet again, I don't know if I can continue to tell prospective students and prospective families that the city of Eugene cares about the people who live here and are compassionate towards them. And I am really passionate about the UVO, and I love the school, and I love the city of Eugene, and I'd love to continue to tell people to come here and that it's an amazing place. And I will continue to tell people that the school is an amazing place, but I don't know if I can support the city council if you don't pass the CET tax. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Carson, followed by Kevin Orr.
I support a CET, but looking at this, looking at this implementation, I wonder what's the point of taxing developers only to pay them back through system development charge waivers? What purpose does the shell game serve? I want a real, I want a real construction excise tax that generates actual revenue to solve this, to solve the affordable housing crisis. You know? Yeah, just don't, don't play shell games. Don't pretend to be doing something, don't pretend to be doing something about gentrification while protecting the developers' pocketbooks using waivers. We need, yeah, I'm strongly in favor of a construction, of a construction excise tax, but we need a, we need a real, a real tax. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Orr, followed by Carmel Perez Snyder.
Hello, my name is Kevin Orr. I'm a student at UVO, living in Ward Three, and I urge you to vote yes on the CET tax. Building affordable housing in Eugene is badly needed to help the city's lower-income residents, which includes many fellow UVO students, whose money is much better spent on tuition than on needlessly expensive housing, and this tax will provide pivotal funds needed for said affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Carmel Perez Snyder, followed by Josephine Ruff.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Carmel Perez Snyder. I live in Ward Eight. ARP represents 550,000 members in the state of Oregon. 57,000 of those live here in Lane County. 52,000 of those are 50, live here in Eugene. ARP works to strengthen communities and advocate for what matters most to families with a focus on health, security, financial stability, and personal fulfillment. As many of you know, I worked on the Tools and Strategies Committee and also am a steering committee member for Better Housing Together. We're here today to urge the council to amend the current proposal to align with the original recommendation from the city manager to set the construction excise tax at .33% effective July 1, 2019, with an increase to .5% effective July 1, 2020. A young man earlier spoke and talked about the success that Bend had seen. That success comes at .5% excise tax. For older people, who typically have lower incomes after they stop working, and many who subsist on Social Security as their sole source of income, housing affordability is an enormous problem. Today, 54% of Oregon homeowners are ages 65-plus and pay more than 30% in housing costs. 21% pay more than 50%. Renters age 65-plus, 34% pay more than 30% in rent, and 39% pay more than 50%. We need housing options that offer solutions for those looking to downsize and stay in their community. Thank you.
Thank you. Josephine Ruff, followed by Hannah Argento-McCurty.
Hi, my name is Josie Ruff. I live in Ward Three, and I'm a university student. I know every year when I'm looking for housing, the first thing that I have to look at is affordability, and it's the same thing for countless other students. And just because of that, I'm asking you guys to vote yes on the CET tax at 1%.
Thank you. Hannah Argento-McCurty, followed by Sutter Munisic, Munisic, excuse me, I'm messing that up.
Hi, my name is Hannah. I'm a student in Ward Three. I'm here as President of College Democrats at University of Oregon to urge you to vote yes on the CET tax at 1%. College students are continually priced out as new, expensive housing developments are built, and we struggle to find affordable housing. Housing is a critical issue in Eugene, and asking some of the wealthiest entities in Eugene to provide an incredibly small portion of their funding towards affordable housing is fundamentally the right thing to do. Put the interest of the public and the marginalized above big business and developers. Thank you.
Thank you. Sutter Munisic, followed by Tristan Waits.
Excuse me. My name is Sutter Munisic, and I'm a student at University of Oregon. I'm a sophomore, and I live in Ward One. I'm in support of the tax at 1% because it's simple. We need to help those that are less fortunate in this city, and I hope you all realize the power you have and how you can help these people.
Thank you. Tristan Waits, followed by Joshua Caraffo, I think.
Hi, I'm Tristan Waits, and I live in Ward One, I believe. Yeah, Simple, you're my representative. I'm currently here to voice my support for the construction excise tax. I think it's a basic principle that I've raised, been raised with all my life, that you take care of and provide a helping hand to those people who need it the most, and especially people who cannot necessarily, you know, I don't know, help themselves out. And the affordable housing crisis is one that I haven't been around long in Eugene, but is obviously a very glaring issue and one that we need to handle. And I think the CE, the CET tax would be a great step at handling this, and personally, I think some of the efforts to derail these efforts, to take care of these people and to, you know, try to provide a helping hand to these people, I think it's really disgusting and deplorable. I, I think we, as people, who have the power and the position to help others who don't have that power, need to help these people and take care of these people. And, you know, not doing it because we're thinking of, you know, 1% less profit on a house for someone, I think that's just disgusting to me, and there's no excuse for it. Thank you very much. Please pass the CET tax. Do the right thing.
Thank you. Joshua, I think it's Caraffo, followed by Mary Barobi.
You got that right, Mayor. Thanks. Josh Caraffo, Ward One, that's in Eugene, tenant and tenant activist, or, yeah, facilitator in senses. And I'm generally in favor of this proposal. After John Van Lanningham spoke, it took me a little bit of a pause, but I, because I am sympathetic to some of the building and supply side arguments, but I think there's a holistic picture, and there are other ways we can make a building easier. We can follow HP 2001, changing zoning code for one, but I'm not going to go into that. I just want to speak to mostly Betty and Emily, who I think were wavering the most at the beginning of this. On the last vote, the rumbly moved forward, and Betty voted with Mike against considering this. And speaking to Betty, she often talks about SROs as being something that could help. I'm not going to speak where I stand on that issue, but if you want to support development of something like that, you need a flexible funding source, and this might provide that. So if councillors want to vote in line with policies that they themselves have suggested, they may consider that. Also, the TAC report, very expensive, had a lot of good ideas in it. Where we're going to get the money to fund them, this is a small starting point, and, and it's a holistic picture. There are other things we need to do as well to make development easier, but this helps the lowest percentage of people, of which we have more in this city. So thank you all very much.
Thank you. Mary Barobi, followed by Jan Phillinger.
Mary Barobi, I'm from Ward One, and Mayor Viness and then city councillors. I didn't prepare anything, but I just wanted to speak up because I thought a group was being unfairly taxed to take care of our homeless problem, and I think there should be a little more creativity in thinking how to resolve the homeless issue. And if anything, I would think you would give a break to people who are building homes and the number of fees you're charging them already, if they are building homes that are low, a certain low level, you know? I know that one of the speakers here was on TV already about a low-income housing area that they were building, and there's absolutely no benefit for them to build them because there's so many fees already placed upon them. And I just think that this is an unfair tax on a specific group of people, and a lot of students were talking about how their rents, they can't make them and that, and I think you should be looking at some of these large rental agencies and how they just keep upping the, taking advantage of the fact that there's so much housing that isn't affordable, but they still are allowed to keep raising their rents. And I think you're pinpointing just a specific group to take care of this problem, and I don't think that's correct. So that's my unprepared speech for tonight.
Thank you. Jan Phillinger, oh, Jan, must be Jan Phillinger.
Yes, thank you.
Followed by Erin Barnhart.
Jan Phillinger, I live at 695 Crest Drive. I'm in Ward Two. I wish to speak to you about the excise tax ordinance. I'm an architect and small business owner of Studio E Architecture. I'm also a partner in the development group specializing in sustainable higher-density, multifamily infill housing. We designed 25 clustered townhouses near Friendly Street. As a citizen of Eugene, I'm very concerned with the dearth of affordable housing in the city. I've been involved with groups such as Better Housing Together, and my firm is also one of several who's donated pro bono time for a small village in Cottage Grove to be built next year, tiny houses, or this year. So I understand the issues. I, I'm generally in support of the ordinance, but I do think that there need to be some changes happening with the codes, city code as well, such as allowing smaller minimum lot sizes for single-family and duplex, allow dwellings in all residential zones, accessory dwellings, allow reduced maximum lot coverage, eliminate permit fees for accessory dwellings, such as other cities have done, and I'll pass on a few, so my time doesn't run out. But my, my last issue is, in 2014, the city passed a climate recovery ordinance, which mandated that Eugene reduce community fossil fuels used by 50% of 2010 levels by 2030. We're far from that, and I think we have to work harder to achieve this goal. Since buildings use nearly 50% of all energy used in the United States, I think that we have an opportunity for that, and we need to address that by removing, exempting sustainable buildings that are certified, passive house or lead, gold, et cetera.
Thank you. Erin Barnhart, followed by Misty Frost.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Erin Barnhart. I live here in Eugene. I'm a renter in Ward Three. Unlike many, I can't afford to buy, but unlike many, statewide and locally, I am fortunate to have stable rental housing. I'm here tonight to speak in support of the CET. I acknowledge fully, I am not a housing expert. I've heard many people speak tonight who have varying expertise and perspectives to bring to this issue, and I appreciate their perspectives. My career expertise is in community mobilization and advocacy and social justice issues, and my understanding of that is that stable housing is truly a cornerstone for thriving communities, and we are experiencing a housing and a houselessness crisis here in Eugene. I have been excited to support the Senate Bill 608, which is working its way through the Oregon House of Representatives in the Senate, which will create some protections for stable housing throughout the state. So when I read about this local CET, I was very excited to read the briefing provided by the Housing Policy Board, and I would like to speak in favor of it. I've heard several tonight advocate for a lower than 1% initial tax. I'm really curious why that is, especially because the report showed that several other cities around the state who have enacted recent CETS have gone at 1%, with the exception of Corvallis, which has gone for 1.5. So I'm curious why we're going so conservative when we have such a pressing concern. Fundamentally, I would just like to echo what Chris Wig with the Lane County Democratic Party said earlier, which is, don't let perfect be the enemy of good. We have a really great proposal in front of us. We have enough research in front of us showing that says this is a chance for us to fund affordable housing to solve a crisis that we can't wait two to three years, because people are living on the streets right now, and they need help right now. So I urge you to move forward in partnership with our community organizations and our community housing advocates and allies, and support the CET. Thank you.
Thank you. Misty Frost, followed by Steve Coatsworth.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Viness and city council. My name is Misty Frost, and I am in Ward Seven. I am a member of the Board of Directors of El Rapa. I'm also a single mom and a full-time student and a community organizer. And aside from my own story of being no cause evicted, I've heard countless stories across our community about people losing housing and not being able to afford it. We lose vulnerable and valuable people in our community every day because we fail to Is it our fault that a silly TV show starring Portland brought every hipster from this side of the Mississippi to live in our state? Is it our fault that climate change is causing millions of people worldwide to migrate to places like Eugene? No, it's not our fault, but it sure is an issue that we have been handed, and we need to use every, like a gentleman said, prick of the prong that we have available. I come from a long line of business, small business owners, so I understand their concern. Also, what is 1%? We've heard a lot about 1% over the last decade, haven't we? What is 1%? Is it worth keeping families together in our community? Do we want our children to have to move away because they can't afford housing here? And employers, do you want to lose your valuable employees?
Thank you.
Thank you. And Steve Coatsworth is our final speaker on this.
Thank you for acting on this. I have kind of a longitudinal view of this thing, because I grew up here, I lived in 23, 24 houses by the time I was 18. Not all of that was the fault of the housing crisis, because that happened beforehand. In terms of who my councillors are, I kind of created a little timeline. For three houses within the last six years I was no cause evicted from, it's been councillor Semple, my current house, and the one I was just no cause evicted from, it's Claire Soret, and Pryor, I lived in a place for three or four months before I was no cause evicted there. Evans, it was really cool, I was on a couch, and James Manning was my neighbor, so I had great conversations at least. Zelenka, I think I couch-surfed on a couple of your donors' couches, and, and, let's see, I don't think anyone, oh, well, growing up, Mike, in your ward, my family was basically priced out of three different places before I moved to Evans District, and it's an issue. It's an issue that's been happening for a long time and occurs every so often. And I'm kind of with George General Patton, in that I think we need to grab this thing by the nose and kick it, and it's took us, and I think that this is worth a shot. I think that a couple of years, doing an experiment, try to keep people like me in my home, is, is worth it. And I've been really lucky, because I have a lot of friends that are pretty gregarious, a lot of people aren't. And I feel like right now, we're playing a game of musical chairs in terms of Eugene, except for we just keep adding players as we remove chairs quicker. And housing availability and affordability is something that I think that you all have the power to help in this way on, at the 1%. And I think that you have an obligation to push this thing forward, and I thank you. And I think that you have an obligation to push this thing forward, and I thank you for your service.
Thank you very much. And that was our final.
An answer for this one, but I signed up about halfway through the stack for this commentary period.
John, did we already had you on the first round?
That was the previous.
I don't have a, all right. I don't have one for you unless it was.
Did I speak anyway?
Go for it.
John Philking, Ward 1. I'm opposed to the current CET proposal. The CET should be imposed at a robust 1% from the get-go. With the possibility of new technologies such as 3D printing that will dramatically lower construction costs, there will seem to be no reason to bother building anything that has a current claimed profit margin of less than 1%. I have a goal for my one-man organization called Calculation.org of wanting to build a multi-unit complex of studio apartments using 3D printing technology that could cost only $150,000 and the apartments would rent for $300 a month. The profit margin on that could be high enough that with enough units online, a few more units could be built every year using the cash profits from the rents on those units. I'd be more than happy to pay the full SDCs, plus I would not need any other tax breaks next to the project work in Eugene. Thank you.
Thank you. And that does close this, the comment section. I have Counselor Taylor wishing to speak. Anyone else? Counselor Taylor, go ahead.
Thank you. Thanks to everyone who spoke. I especially want to point out some people who I think said very well. Carolyn Jacobs spoke the truth very clearly. This is a pretend tax for the first two years. And just moving money, it isn't new money. Bill Aspergen pointed out the same thing. David Monk. Stephen, I don't remember the last name, but Michael Ganson, Stephen Carson. It's not, it doesn't bring in any money at all. It just is the way for us to pretend that we're doing a tax and it comes out of the general fund. We should go back and look at it and decide clearly and honestly what we want to do. As for the man who said the third year would never happen, I think that's probably true. But at any rate, I don't think it's, I don't like doing something that is not honest. And it is not honest. Thank you.
Counselor Zelenka.
Yeah, thank you all for coming out this evening. We have a whole people on the next item as well. Two points. One, the offset from the general fund is temporary. It's only the first two years. Wasn't my idea. I don't really like it, but I could probably live with it if it gets us to a CET at 1%. Seven out of the nine cities that already have adopted a CET adopted it at 1% and have been working under that, including Cannon Beach, Hood River County, Hood River City, Newport, Milwaukee, Portland. And Corvallis is actually at 1.5%. Only two have it lower than that. None of them have it at 0.5% or half a percent. And I, along, I think most people at this, at the table are committed to doing all the other stuff to increase the affordable housing supply in our community and to reduce the cost of housing regardless of the CET percent.
Okay, Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate everybody's testimony. I I often have difficulty when I hear someone say that unless you agree with them on either side of the question, that you obviously don't care. I disagree with my colleagues frequently on things, but I know that they care. I may just disagree about how to get there. And I hope we have public hearings in the future where we can talk that way to one another, even when we disagree. I really do. I would, I would say that I appreciate all the work that's been done to get us to this point. One of the things I know from the work that I do during, during the regular part of the day is kind of how housing gets built in our community. There's a couple of different models. People pay somebody to build them a house on a one-off basis. And there are people who do larger-scale housing developments when they build homes. Wow, man, that's pretty rude and wrong, too. Anyway. My concern is that there are only a few folks that are left in the category of building a large number of homes in our community. And I don't know if we included them in this conversation well enough to get and understand how they will respond when I think we put this into place at 0.33. There are a couple of large-scale developers of homes that build homes in our community that if they decided to retire, they go away, they go to another market. And we would have half the homes that we had last year, which is being built at all, which is a third the number that was built 10 years ago. And we would have this problem getting much worse with a smaller supply than better. So again, I'm wondering if we have had, since there are so few of them, specific conversations with those who build large-scale home developments about how they will actually respond to this. Because I'd be very interested to know that answer before we make the decision. Thank you.
Any other counsel comments?
Well, I'll just, I just want to follow up with that and just say this, this has been a conversation that has gone on for a year. There has been very robust public participation in this conversation, both through Better Housing Together, who has reached out to a lot of builders, and through the Housing Tools and Strategies, through The Chamber and other places. So I feel that there has been, this is, however we resolve this final vote on the CET, there has been ample opportunity for people to weigh in on their opinions, their concerns, and their hopes for it. And we are looking at trying to create a long-term funding stream that will replace what we have had for decades, which is more robust federal funding, which has gone away. And so we are aiming to create our own local revenue funding stream, and I think it's critically important. So thank you. A reminder to everybody that this will not come to a council vote until April 8. So if you had, were thinking it was coming sooner, it's not until April when we have a full, full council back in session. All right. And that is the end of that public hearing. And now we are ready for the final public hearing.
An ordinance concerning unlawful transfer on vehicular portion of right-of-way adding Section 5.170 to the Eugene Code 1971 and amending Section 5.990 of that code. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. City Council directed the city manager to draft an ordinance that mirrors Springfield's unlawful transfer on vehicular portion of the right-of-way code. The proposed ordinance prohibits drivers and passengers in vehicles from passing items to pedestrians unless the vehicle is legally parked. Currently, only a person stepping into the roadway can be cited per Oregon traffic codes. The ordinance that is the subject of this public hearing would add a provision to provide a maximum fine of $50 for the offense.
Thank you. So just a reminder of the rules, even though you know them. Those wishing to speak during the public hearing must submit a completed request to speak form to the information desk prior to the public hearing. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward, if known. You will have two minutes to comment. There are lights on the timer. The red light indicates the end of the two minutes. And I have, it looks like 42 speakers. So again, you know, second name, go to the, go to the warm-up seat. First is Janet Sims, followed by Cliff Gray.
My name is Janet Sims. I'm Janet Sims, Ward 1 at the moment, homeless, 69 years old and handicapped. The only way I can make any money that I need for medicines, toilet paper, things like that, because my social security is so low, I can't afford to pay rent. No less anything else. And it's more expensive to be homeless than pay rent because you have to eat out. I like to say that that's my right to have, have a sign asking for help. Even a book I read often is the Bible. It even says in there, if somebody asks for a coin, give them your cloak, which means your coat, everything that you have. A rich person can't go to heaven because they don't give, they don't give to the poor enough. I'm asking you not to pass this because I have a right to have a sign saying whatever I wanted to say. It doesn't cause accidents. Nobody gets hurt. If you feel like a Christian and you want to give me something because I need it, I'm not an alcoholic. I'm not a drug addict. I'm just poor. I'm homeless. I don't cause any trouble. I just stand there with my sign. You want to give me money? Great. If you don't, I still say good morning and smile. So please reconsider this because it is my right to have free speech. And to me, writing down something is the same as speaking out because I'm saying what I want to say, but on a piece of paper. Please, don't pass this. It's just not fair. You're going to have a lot of more stealing in stores because people are going to be hungry and can't earn money. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please. Please don't do that.
Cliff Gray, Cliff Gray, followed by Charmaine Reg, Ray.
Cliff Gray, Ward 7. I wanted to say that it's a bad idea. I believe it to be in violation of the Constitution. And I have heard that the ACLU is planning to take on this issue of both here and Springfield for that reason alone. But what the first thing came to my mind was were mothers who deliver their children to school, you know, drive them to school. The circles fill up. They can't, they can't get in and are out on the road, so the kid gets out. And you hand them a bag of lunch or lunch money through the window, and they're just as guilty as these people that you're targeting. And I just have the incredible belief that, that the only way that this thing can work is if you're using profiling and specific targeting to affect the homeless themselves. And I would, I would wish you would consider the freedom of association to be maintained and allow these people to support themselves. That's really all I have.
Thank you. Charmaine Ray, followed by Donna Riddle.
Hi, my name's Charmaine Reg. I'm in Ward 5. I'm not going to go on and on. I just want to ask that you support this ordinance. It does not prevent anyone from giving to someone panhandling. It simply says, pull off to the side, not in the traffic lane, not at the intersections. So it's a win-win for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Donna Riddle, followed by Gina, no last name.
Donna Riddle, Springfield, Oregon, because I couldn't afford housing in Eugene. I have seen no study showing that passing a pair of hand warmers or money from a vehicle has caused one accident. What this is really all about is trying to keep people comfortable by not having to look at homeless people who don't look like them. And the lack of comfort does not equal the need for survival. You heard a testimony from a woman who needed, needs to be out there because she can't work. The city has not adopted, like some other cities, employment for people cleaning our parks or streets to provide an income for people. And I'm really tired of the way homeless people are being treated in our community. I think it's a real shame that we don't have a navigation center downtown. I begged for years for some use of the old LCC downtown center. I was always told, well, the building is not safe. And then I read where they were going to have it as a incubator, but then they didn't get the grant. Well, it was good enough for an incubator. It's good enough for a navigation center, and we need it downtown.
Thank you. Gina? Gina, followed by Dave Piccioli.
Hi, my name is Gina and I believe that, I live in Ward 8. First off and foremost, I do want to say that this ordinance is not a panhandling ban. Because if it were, it would violate a person's First Amendment rights to freedom of speech and expression. I've also heard people say that this ordinance is criminalizing kindness. But people are free to give and donate to whomever whenever they want, as long as they pull over to the road, park, and keep it off our roads. According to ODOT, distracted driving in Oregon is when a driver voluntarily diverts attention to something not related to driving that uses the driver's eyes, ears, or hands. That includes visual, auditory, manual, and cognitive. Most distractions involve more than one of these types, along with a mental component. When making hand-to-hand transfers while on the road, it contains all of visual, manual, and mental. In 2012 to 2016, there were 10,814 crashes. Out of that, there were 16,503 injuries caused by crashes involving distracted drivers in Oregon of all ages. Only 1,040 of those crashes involved cell phones. That leaves 9,744 distracted drivers and 12,006 injuries caused by distracted drivers in the state of Oregon. When the new law was passed in 2017 for electronic devices, the number in distracted driving went down by 80,631. Distracting while giving to panhandling involves rummaging through your purse, wallet, reaching into your pockets, console cup holders, looking for spare change, not to mention slowing down.
Thank you.
It doesn't belong on our roads.
Thank you. Dave Piccioli, followed by Bob Cassidy.
So first of all, I'd like to say that I made this piece of art for Counselor Betty Taylor, who I'm very thankful. I made one for Emily, too, before. Gave it to her. She still has it. Maybe the cameras can pick this up. It still has a lot of color because it's new. They try to lose some pigments as time goes by. But yeah, when I, when I walk, I often run into people that are asking for stuff. And I, I'm not scared by it. I understand that if, you know, you're a woman or you're old person or something, it could be somewhat of a fearful experience. But I really like it. When somebody asks me for spare change, if they appear honest and they ask please, I give them 25 cents or 50 cents or 75 cents. When they ask me for a cigarette, I can give them a cigarette if I have enough. No big deal. I was under the impression that this was against panhandling, so this is not really relevant. So I'm just going to give Betty this present and I'm going to go back home.
Bob Cassidy, followed by David Strahan.
Bob Cassidy, Ellen Michener's, Counselor Zelenka's Ward. Everybody is wanting to help the homeless. They do it in different ways. And some want to pass it out from their car. I think you have to ask one of two questions or both questions. How does this help the homeless if we put in an ordinance like that? And the second question was, what does this do to our police department? Giving them one more ordinance to enforce when they already say they are overburdened and need more help. Thank you.
Thank you. David Strahan, followed by Eric King.
Good evening, councilors. Thank you for your time this evening. I'm David Strahan. I live
I live outside of Eugene. My business and projects are here in Eugene. I'm here to speak against the panhandling ordinance. We reviewed all the information quite heavily in Springfield when it came up there. There were no cases of any accident pedestrian-related incidences in all the research and all the people. But it is a way for people, and Egan's been mentioned, Egan is here because our unsheltered have unmet needs that we still haven't filled. It's just another mean-spirited way to prevent them from getting what they need with cash out of the kindness of people's heart. But here's a letter. Somebody contacted me today. She lives right down the street. Dear Eugene City Council, my name is Erica Thieson. I'm a resident homeowner in Eugene. I have three kids between 11 and 15, and they skateboard. We spent quite a great time at, our past couple of years, at Washington-Jefferson Skate Park. My family and I have always enjoyed the skate park and have felt relatively safe and welcome there. We encounter many different kinds of people there and consider ourselves part of a larger skateboarding community and family. We have never had an unsafe or negative experience because the unhoused people that sometimes are at the park. So I was upset and concerned yesterday when my family and I noticed many large boulders now placed along the grass between the sidewalk and road off of Washington Street, where many unhoused campers were recently, have been removed. I've seen news reports of the city performing research and looking ways into how to deal with the worsening unhoused population. But this seems a bit menacing, medieval, and unwelcoming. Is this some type of homeless discouragement measure? Who's responsible for placing these boulders? And at what cost? Is it coming from the taxpayers here in Eugene? Because it's not helping the homeless. I work in healthcare and many unhoused individuals volunteer in some programs that help them. And I can tell you that placing boulders on grass to discourage camping does absolutely nothing to address the root cause of homelessness. And any funds for giant boulders could be much better spent on shelters and programs that address these root causes of homelessness. My other concerns about the boulders are more practical. It's a safety concern to children riding those pathways.
Thank you. Eric King, Eric, is Eric King here? This was from the earlier, okay. Jennifer Frenzer, Jennifer Frenzer, followed by Leslie Robnett.
Good evening, Jennifer Frenzer, and I'm in Betty Taylor's Ward. I'm here to join the chorus of voices in opposition to the restrictions on panhandling and imposing restriction on a legal transaction and a compassionate form of communication. And communication between two community members that should not be interfered with. In September 2018, the ACLU sent letters to 61 cities in Oregon informing them that they are in violation. In Medford, their law was struck down. We don't have to keep going through this. Mentioning safety to support enforcement every time homelessness is involved. It's perpetuating a myth and a stereotype. Don't participate in it, please. Just stop. Instead, create safety for people who really are unsafe, the unhoused. For 20 years, what I've witnessed in this town when people panhandle is calm, silent sign holders and drivers carefully handing bills, sandwiches, hand warmers. Don't discourage lawful, safe behavior between community members with laws for an overstated fiction. Please stop using the guise of safety to restrict people taking care of each other. Thank you.
Thank you. Leslie Robnett, followed by Michael Carrigan.
Okay. As you know, I've been here with city council, okay? I'm taking a break because I live in Springfield. Now, let's get real here, okay? We've heard about homelessness. We've heard about this other tax law, blah, 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 blah. It's time to get things done or don't do it at all and go home and dissolve the city council. Take that thing down and run up the German Reich and invoke the Fourth Reich. We're not Nazi Germany. And I've told every single one of you this, okay? You have also been on one of a lot of our campaigns. Now, it's time to wake up or go home. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Carrigan, followed by Wayne Martin.
Good evening, Mayor Minnis and councilors. I'm Michael Carrigan, proud resident of Ward 7. I'm the Shelter Rights Coordinator, Committee Line, in Lane County. I'm speaking tonight in opposition to the proposed ordinance that would prohibit the transfer of funds from a vehicle to pedestrians. I feel strongly that the unhoused have the legal right to ask for donation on our street corners, that the funds or food they garner is critical to their survival, and that their actions are not a threat to public safety. In recent years, I've been out in the streets, forests, and fields, participating in the point-in-time home homeless count. I and the other volunteers have talked to a large number of just really, really fine, fine folks who should have the right to safely ask for money, work, or food on our street corners. The need is, is great. Restricting panhandling stigmatizes people who are just asking for help. We, oh, it's just, it's, it's a basic human right. We have a homelessness crisis in our community. We all need to come together to deal with the crisis. And targeting panhandlers is not going to help us accomplish it. Thank you.
Thank you. Wayne Martin, followed by Darcy Martin.
I'm Wayne Martin. Mayor, Mr. Manager, council members. Before I begin, I'd like to ask a favor of you. Actually, I have been appearing at this stand for seven years now and in many, many ways, appearing here is often a means of asking a favor of you. Thank you for the opportunity. I've asked a favor of your attention. I've asked for the favor of your consideration of specific ideas I bring here. Asking a favor is admitting that one needs something and doesn't have it. My parents tried to raise me not to ask for anything or need anything. That didn't actually work out. Through the years, I'm realizing it's becoming more and more natural to find a way to ask for what I need. I'm sure you can all attest to asking favors of the people you work with. Likewise, I've become comfortable having a favor asked of me. I can't always oblige, but I often can. When I drive my car, I encounter folks who are asking a favor. That's all. They have a need and they're simply asking for help. They need a favor. Isn't it only reasonable to allow people on the street to ask a favor with a sign, the same way I am doing now? And what you do as a group who need each other's gifts, it's just exchanging favors. Please, as you embark on a more compassionate tack report, suggestions, and difficulties and challenges, let's not go the wrong way for the next few months and ban people who are asking a favor.
Thank you. Darcy Martin, followed by Laney Davis.
Hello, I am Darcy Martin. I'm a Eugene native. I am in Ward 7, River Road, Santa Clara area. I own and pay taxes on two properties there. First off, this is not a homeless issue. And nowhere in this ordinance does it talk about homeless. I represent a group of nearly 700 like-minded citizens that want you to pass a traffic safety ordinance that mirrors Springfield's 6.112 from 2016. We have also started an online petition on change.org that has nearly 1,300 signatures on it. As you heard, there are many cities, I believe 61 in Oregon, that have successfully adopted similar ordinances. Our community is not anti-poor or without a heart. I personally have volunteered and donated to many of these causes. I just don't think that the place to ask for a handout is on our street corners distracting our drivers. It's unlawful to be on our cell phones while we are behind the wheel of our vehicles. Why should it be allowed to get in our purse or our wallet? Or to look for handouts to give to panhandlers begging for money on our street corners when we're behind the wheel? There are so many services in Lane County that assist the needy: St. Vincent de Paul, Eugene Mission, Kathleen Community Services, the Salvation Army, The Dining Room, Looking Glass, Whitebird, Kahoots, Women's Space, just to name a few. Free services are available for food, for shelter, housing, clothing, job placement, medical care, mental health, drug and alcohol rehabilitation, and rental assistance. We are the working class. Please stand if you agree. We are parents. We work hard every day to have a home, food, and to provide for our families. We are standing up and speaking out to our city council, even though we all have to get dinner on the table and get up early tomorrow morning to do it all over again. We're here in red and we want your vote, please.
Thank you.
Pay taxes. All right, please.
Since I was interrupted. All right, I-
This is really not what you call a welcoming environment.
Mike, stop. I will ask all of you to restrain yourselves, be quiet and respectful of the speakers. And if you cannot do that, we will not continue the hearing. So please, every speaker deserves a right to be heard quietly and respectfully. No outbursts. Thank you for following that simple rule.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Two more sentences?
Okay.
We are here in red to tell you that our vote matters. We pay the taxes out of our working income to run this city. Please vote yes for this ordinance to make a small step towards making our streets safe. We deserve it.
Thank you. Laney Davis, followed by Jerry Gloss.
Mayor Minnis, Eugene City Council, and members of the public, my name is Laney Davis and I live in Ward 7. My concern is about transferring items as a safety issue. I have a young, inexperienced teenage driver, and he has had folks transferring items walk out in front of him on the street while he is driving, causing him to make quick, perhaps unsafe decisions. My concern is a devastation that would result. He, as a young driver, would be impacted for the remainder of his life if he hits someone, as would the person he hit. It would be heartbreaking all around. I urge you all to think about this issue and think about those who would be impacted should a driver unintentionally injure someone. Don't wait until something bad happens. Be proactive and think of keeping your constituents safe, all of them. As a parent, I ask that you vote in favor of this ordinance. It's not about not allowing folks to transfer items. It's asking you to not allow them to transfer them in the street. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry Gloss, followed by Pamela Kraus.
I apologize for my outburst. It's an emotional issue. Anyways, there's a war on the poor and it is real. There's people that harass homeless people every day on a day-to-day basis. My point being is that there is, this freedom of speech is a, is a counterviable right. And is, you guys, I see your guys' signs. Whenever you guys are asking for votes and you guys like, like pander to your constituency, what's the difference? People turn over and they say, oh, there's your sign. That is causing a wreck. You know, if Trump and if Hillary Clinton and all these other people can like ask for money and get money, then that means it's freedom of speech. The, Citizens United says that money is free speech. I don't like the decision, but that's the law. The law is the law. And you guys cannot like, like say, the rich people can change the law and the poor people can't. ACLU and I mean, it's just wrong if you guys like do this because it's exactly what we need. What's the difference? You guys like put your signs on the street, somebody asks you for money? It's the same fucking thing. So if you vote for this, you're hypocrites. No, you're hypocrites. You're evil. And you guys are against the poor people. Thank you.
Thank you. Pamela Kraus, followed by Michael Gannon.
Good evening. I now live in Springfield. I was living in Emily Simples Ward when I lived in Eugene. I can barely afford to live anywhere in this community. I'm one of those older people who pays over 70% of income in rent. I moved here seven years ago, seeking five additions to my life. I got way more than that. And I also have a new calling here. I have seen more rupture of destitution here in the last three years than I have seen anywhere I have lived. Three weeks after the election, and no one really asked me what election, I woke up one morning and said what I needed to do was quit my full-time job. I loved being a housing case manager, to be on the ground because I knew things were going to get nasty. And what I see here in Eugene is more than I could have predicted. I carry goods with me to hand out. I will continue to do that with what I have, when I can, where I can. There was an anonymous quote. Well, first I'll give you a quote from the Oregon Center for Public Policy from February 14th this year. It says, "Poverty despite work is the rule, not the exception." And an anonymous quote that came my way today. "Sometimes public servants do the right thing. It should be always. Please do not pass this ordinance."
Thank you. Michael Gannon, followed by John Thielking.
Hi, I'm Michael Gannon. As you know, I think, I've lived in this city more than 40 years. And I'm quite frustrated and have been for some time with the, the challenge to do righteous stuff in the community that I live in. I've recently become a fan of Taylor Swift, who's moved from country music to pop. And she's got a really popular hit now that keeps coming up to me in so many different ways. And by the way, her Instagram account has one eighth of the US population. She has a song which you can find on YouTube by Googling "mean" and Taylor Swift. The refrain is, "Why you gotta be so mean?" I think of people out on the streets in Eugene as actually performing their constitutional responsibility to exercise free speech. They're out there and it's evident that they're in need. I'm a little jealous of the group that wants to stop them from getting handouts from the public because it's dangerous, having come in to talk to you so many times about the state laws regarding crosswalks and how often homeless people are targeted when they try to cross the street by fat cars, by outrageous drivers, et cetera. So this, having this hearing is a little like seeing a bunch of homeless people trying to make a demonstration on a skyscraper. And they're out there hanging on by their hands and the city council wants to come out and step on them. Step on those fingers and let them drop instead of recognizing how much time they spend on the street that could be spent in much more positive ways by bringing them in, offering a lot of alternatives.
Thank you, Michael.
I know my time's up, but the issue is tremendous.
We still have over 20 people to speak, so thank you very much. John Thielking, followed by Misha Seymour.
Okay, I'm on the list this time. John Thielking, Ward 1. I am opposed to the anti-panhandling ordinance because it violates the First Amendment rights of both the pedestrian and the motorist. I believe that the transfer of items to and from vehicles by pedestrians is so safe that it really doesn't need any additional regulation. But if you're going to be concerned about traffic safety, there should be something in the ordinance about transferring flyers from pedestrians to vehicles or at least cover the big loophole that would allow a driver to hand an item to someone's seat or not bike without penalty or possibly seat on one of those rocks that you planted on the side of the road. If any of you in the audience are opposed to the adoption of the anti-panhandling- If any of you in the audience are opposed to the adoption of the anti-panhandling ordinance, please stand up. Thank you. And I apologize to the other people wearing red, but I also ask the 60 or so people who I contacted in my opt-in list from the petition to please wear red or yellow to show their opposition. I have over 300 names on the portion of the petition against the anti-panhandling ordinance that I personally circulated. I'll hand those to original students now. It is possible that other people in the attendance tonight also had people sign the copies that they have. And seeing that I have a minute left, I have another thing I want to add. I started couchhosting.org in response to my experience hosting about approximately 20 people of a homeless or traveler variety at my clothing center store in 2017. Not one of them experienced overt behavioral problems when they're at my store. Was probably going to start couchhosting.org and have people sleep overnight in my apartment. Again, that experience, there were a little bit of problems with stealing and stuff, but on the balance, the people there were very well behaved, so there is really no issue about having people sleep overnight with couchhosting. Thank you.
Thank you. Misha Seymour, followed by, oh, oh, that's why this was messed up. Okay. Misha Seymour, followed by Susan Matthews.
Misha Seymour, I live in Eugene. I think it's important that we reject this mean-spiritedness, dehumanizing, stupid idea that would further drag the downtrodden emotionally into despair into the muck. The AARP, I mean, what are you, loony or something? I mean, Oregon has one of the highest hunger rates in the nation. We give billions of dollars in tax breaks to developers here in Oregon, and we treat the poor with disdain. Eugene should stop being dysfunctionally, emotionally clueless in what we do. For example, the Rosa Parks statue at the LTD, there's rental bikes blocking people from sitting down. Rosa Parks, oh, Rosa, but Broadway and Olive Street, people used to be able to sit down, but there's those big humongous lock barriers so people can't sit down. Why is that happening here? We need to open, you need to open your eyes and your hearts. We should be uplifting the downtrodden instead. We should give them hope. We should treat them with love. Isn't that what Jesus would do? Everyone has the right to be treated with dignity, not just yuppies here. We're all flowers blooming together, and we should stop being dysfunctional and realize that people can fall through, people can have their houses, they can lose their house. Oh, and then what? I mean, if you lose your house and have nothing to do, what would you do, starve? Oh, well, yeah, maybe.
Thank you. Susan Matthews, followed by Gina, no, Kim R. Scott.
Hi, I'm Susan Matthews. I live in downtown Eugene, and I oppose this ordinance. For me, it's an important part of my, what I feel is my exercise of my civic responsibility to be able to give to my brothers and sisters who are in need. And it's important for me to be allowed to continue to do that and to live in a community that encourages that. It's okay to slow down to help each other. We're Eugene. It's all right for us to do that, and I really hope that you will support that too. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim R. Scott, is she still here? Did she leave? Okay. Leanna Long, Leung, followed by Jack Grady.
Hi there, my name is Leanna Long. I'm in Ward 7, and I'm a local property owner and small business owner, as well as a mother. I have property along one of the main roads on 7th Street, and I've seen many times people panhandling on 7th and coming down the main freeway there on a daily basis, watching them Frogger to the other side of the freeway, or standing in the middle of the freeway during traffic and cars stopping. So, I do believe it's a safety issue. Yesterday, I watched a woman bend over into her purse to be so kind to give something to the gentleman, but he was right in the way of traffic and he almost got hit. Almost. And it could have happened, but every day I see this, people running across. So, it is a safety issue, and it's not because it has anything to do with a homeless issue. I worked for a local shelter, First Place Family Center, and so I do have care and compassion for the homeless community. But I do think it is a safety concern. You could park and get off and hand something to that individual. As I am also of offense, even though I'm in support, before I used to do this exact same thing, give food, money to the bus, and a card to the shelter. And now I realize there is a safety issue, so I will pull over to the side and do the same thing. So, it's not that I don't care. I support and give to many organizations, as well as I'm a taxpayer, and I take my child with his friends every year. Thank you.
Thank you. Jack Grady, followed by Ben Clark.
Good evening, Your Honor, ladies and gentlemen, brothers and sisters. My name is Jack Grady. I'm from Ward 1, lived in Eugene for 20 years. And I have never yet seen anyone hand money or wool socks or anything else out of a car window, except when they're stopped at a corner, which is generally where you find people panhandling on corners. And at corners, if any of you are familiar with our streets, there's no place to stop right there. You can't pull over to the curb at a corner, you'd have to do it in the middle of the block, and the person panhandling is down there on the corner. I have never, now, I've seen one time people panhandling out in the street itself, and I'm looking forward to seeing the police department issuing citations to the fire department for the Fill the Boot effort, which was who was doing the collecting of money in the street. Now, I was at the Police Commission the other night, and I don't mean to be rude to anyone who was there, but the subject for discussion was the role of the Police Commission dealing with the homeless question. And I'm not saying that all homeless panhandlers or all panhandlers are homeless, but when asked to discuss it, there was only one person in the room who had any ideas on the question. Everyone else talked about, we need to talk to partners, this just happens in other cities, we need to get some ideas on this. Only the chief of police pointed out that weaponizing the citation system is not a way to deal with homelessness, that his department is strapped for people. They have lots to do, they have, spend much too much time before they can hit a call because they are short on staff, and to give them another foolish thing to do, to harass the homeless, because this has nothing to do with safety, it has to do with seeing poor people on the corners. That is what this ordinance is about. Vote it down.
Ben Clark, followed by Sarah George.
Thank you. My name is Ben Clark. I'm a Ward 4 resident, and I have sent all of you a note prior to this meeting and got a response from a couple of you. So, I'm a professor of public policy at the U of O, and I want to thank you for proposing this ordinance, not because I support it. So, in the classroom, when I want to talk about how government needs to think about legal matters and policymaking, I can show that that doesn't always happen. I got a response from one of the council members, quote, "I wasn't looking at it from a legal point of view." And you see, this ban on charitable giving seeks to criminalize the same behavior that the courts have struck down dozens of times and have never upheld. Okay? In the classroom, when I want to talk about evidence-driven policymaking, I can again point to a response I got from one of the council members here that says, "I have requested staff information on the number and location of public safety incidents and injuries attributable to people transferring items from their cars over the past several years." And what this gives me an example is, is the solution to a problem was found before evidence was given that it was actually a problem in the first place. In the classroom, when I talk about learning from policy success and failure, I can show research that shows these types of bans prolong people being unhoused and increases their suffering rather than providing any sort of public benefit. And in the classroom, when I talk about fiscally smart policy, I can give an example of how you're proposing an ordinance that will be costly to enforce and one which the city will be sued and will almost certainly lose this fight, because bans on charitable giving like this and like so many other in the country have all been struck down. And just because Springfield has it and 60 other 1 communities have it in Oregon, you know that the ACLU is on you for this, and they have already sent you all that information. And when I want to talk about doing good in government, I can give an example of Eugene using the force of law to silence voices of the innocent people and silencing people like myself, and it's just not acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah George, followed by Candace. No last name.
Hello, my name is Sarah, and I am, I believe in Ward 2. I'm one of the organizers for the Share Fair. That's a monthly gathering that gives goods and services to people who are houseless and low income. I've interacted with a lot of the houseless communities in Eugene. I think that this ordinance is about criminalizing an act of kindness and a random act of kindness and giving people an opportunity to do something to help someone who is in need. And making that a criminal act is going to make people more afraid to interact with people who are less fortunate than themselves, as well as give people who are already extremely vulnerable another reason to be targeted. And so, that's why I am against this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Candace, I don't have a last name. All right. Stephen Carson, followed by Kathy Cooks.
I already spoke earlier, I guess I don't need to introduce myself. This ordinance is just another way to hide a problem, to push the reality of our society away from the thoroughfares where it can be comfortably ignored. It has nothing to do with safety, despite scaremongering about distracted drivers that would make you think it's like robbing a moving train to pass five bucks to someone at a stoplight. It has nothing to do with safety and everything to do with putting the poor and unhoused out of sight and out of mind. But that's not the way forward. The housing crisis can't be papered over. No matter how much this ordinance proponents would wish it, you aren't going to police homelessness out of existence. The solution is housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Cooks, followed by Jenny Ullam.
Good evening. I'm a homeowner in Eugene, Oregon, and I'm an active volunteer in our community. I today volunteered at St. Vincent Lynn Home Center on Highway 99, and we passed out over 200 food boxes. I also volunteer at the Egan Warming Center, where over 60 people, 90, I'm sorry, 80 people stayed there. We feed more than what stays because people come in the morning that want to eat that may not have stayed the day before. On February 9th, because on the 2nd and 4th Saturdays, I volunteer at St. Mary's, and they have a breakfast. On the 9th, we served over 300 people. And at those different events that I've had the opportunity to volunteer at, they're different people. They're not always the same. There's a few that are the same. I just wanted to say, since we're still in the planning stages of opportunities and services, that we can expand for our homeless neighbors, our needy neighbors, and our college students. I want to recommend that you wait two years before eliminating panhandling to our neighbors. I've gladly given out my car window, money, bags of cans and bottles, food, even an umbrella. So, I ask that you don't eliminate panhandling on the streets. We need to do more.
Thank you. Jenny Ullam, followed by Stefan Struck.
Thank you, good evening. My name's Jenny Ullam. I live in Ward 3. I also want to thank you for bringing this ordinance forward for consideration. I have to confess, I'm married to a First Amendment scholar, a free speech champion, and would no, in no way support anything that would limit a person's right to stand on a street corner, free expression with a sign to say what they want to say. And I would, I know you wouldn't support that either. We know that's unconstitutional and is just not acceptable. But I, when I first read this ordinance, I was actually, it rang true to me, it made sense to me, because I have wondered how it was okay to have a business transaction in a moving, you know, right-of-way, given that we can't even, you know, check our cell phones at a stoplight because it impedes traffic. So, it seemed inconsistent with our traffic laws. The thing that makes this ordinance acceptable to me is that the focus of the, any enforcement is not the person holding the sign, not the person who is requesting help, but the driver. And I think that's appropriate. I, just last week, was merging onto Ferry Street Bridge, right there at EWEB at 4th, where there's always someone standing there, and the gentleman was, had gotten out of his car and walked around the front to hand somebody, which I think is probably already illegal. But there were, you know, cars backed way up, and while nothing bad happened there, it did seem unsafe and ill-advised. So, I think that there can be support for the unhoused, for people that are asking for it, definitely with those lights on, without enabling the transfer from a vehicle that's supposed to be moving on a road. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Stefan Struck, followed by Todd Boils.
All right. Thank you all for coming down here tonight. I hope everyone had a fantastic Valentine's Day. While everyone else was out celebrating Valentine's Day, I was celebrating Independence Day. Not just Independence Day as freedom from the clutches of incredibly surprisingly violent women, but freedom from the possessions of negative thoughts, because I'm an enlightened person, and I have great advice, and I think you all can benefit from my advice. Now, this legislation tonight is super, super hypocritical, because in my experience as a politician, people tell me this stuff, like, as a politician, you have to ask people for money. And I'm always like, what? Ask people for money? Like a bum? No, I would never do such a thing. And criminalizing the people who give the homeless money is negative karma, and that takes you away from the path towards enlightenment. Now, if you make it harder for the homeless to get money from people that want to give money to them, it's going to make it less likely for you to get money from the people that you ask for money. Now, recognizing that is a step closer to enlightenment. Yeah. Now, I really appreciate the two minutes we've got here tonight, because, as you all know, two minutes is one more than I need to make an impression that will last all night. Four minutes, that's a lot, and in four speeches. I don't think anyone here can handle seven minutes in heaven. So, thank you all very much for coming down here tonight. Please think about what I've said. Positive karma, and God bless America. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Todd Boils, Todd Boils, no. Okay. Joe Williams. Joe Williams.
He's in the back.
Yep. Okay. Followed by Rose Paget.
Hi, Joe Williams, Ward 2. Almost a lifelong resident of Eugene and a local business owner. I have offices in Eugene and Springfield. I think it's one of the greatest shames of our country that we have basically looked at poverty as some kind of an evil. at poverty as some kind of an evil thing, as the people who, you know, are somehow something's wrong. And I feel bad about that. However, I look at something like this, the, the one thing I was, that made my heart hurt was seeing stickers saying, "Stop Eugene Panhandling." I don't believe that that's what I would want to see because I think that that's just a human right to be able to survive however you can. However, I think when you look at this, it is a safety issue. All of us, anybody driving, has seen, I'm sure, at various intersections what that can be like when people are getting out of their cars or people are walking through traffic to get things. And, and God bless them that they're giving those things to them. Usually when I give, I plan it out. I bring food or something like that as opposed to money. And I do park typically, don't hand it out the window. And I think what I'd like to see is that we find that common ground where we're not saying, "Don't stand there with your sign because you do need to be seen." We need to see the, the less fortunate and we need to help them and get, and solve this problem. However, we also have a society with rules and safety issues that we need to follow. So, that's your job and I'm glad it's not mine.
Thank you. Rose Paget, followed by Sharon, Sharon Wright or, I think, or, looks like, Rose.
Hey, I'm Rose. So, yeah, I oppose the panhandling ban and we've had a lot of middle-class and upper-class people here tonight talking about, "Oh, it's not a panhandling ban," et cetera. But I mean, like, look at the material effect. It is. And I'm not here to talk to them and I'm not here to talk to y'all. I'm mostly just here to sort of like put my point out there into the air because this is about class war, which is about power. It's a war of the rich versus the poor. I'm gay and trans. Eugene likes to pretend it's friendly to gay and trans people, but it's not because it's part of the same straight society, the same capitalist society which makes it so that the vast majority of the population is poor and those people can go die unless they're exploited by a capitalist for their profit. And I mean, so, money is like access to survival resources in this society. Obviously, poor people need to share resources amongst ourselves and this is an attack on our power as poor people, as the working class, so to speak, although some people here tonight have been using that term in a reactionary, in what I would call a social fascist manner. Like, so, yeah. This is about war. We need power. We need a militant, large movement, bigger than Occupy ever was, to take the property that the capitalists have hoarded for themselves as they poison the water and kill us all and fight back and win and maybe save ourselves or at least die less painfully. So, yeah, solidarity forever. Go homeless people, go poor people, go gay, trans people.
Thank you. Sharon, Sharon Wright, followed by Matthew Puglisi.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for being here. My name is Siobhan Wright, Ward Seven. To end the homelessness crisis, we must first end the criminalization of homelessness and instead focus all funds and efforts on housing the unhoused and providing those with services and opportunities that provide them dignity. Millions of people experience poverty and homelessness each year. The previous issue at this hearing just provided plenty of proof of that. Eugene should not further criminalize homelessness, making those of ours in need more susceptible to harassment, displacement, and criminal penalties. More effective policies to provide housing and services for those in need are more affordable than further criminalizing poverty. If we here in Eugene prioritize inclusion, we must acknowledge that marginalized communities such as people of color, people living with disabilities, and people of the LGBTQ community are disproportionately affected by homelessness. The communities will further, will be further marginalized by this criminalization. Please, provide proof showing how supporting panhandlers has been a threat to public safety here in Eugene. Please, provide proof that further involving already stretched thin law enforcement is justifiable. Please do not criminalize acting out of humanity and instead use city resources and funds for more humane solutions. Free speech, housing, not handcuffs. Keep Eugene kind. Thank you.
Thank you. Matthew Puglisi. Matthew, are you here? No, okay. John Abbey. John, there we go. Followed by Eric Jackson.
Hello, my name is John Abbey. I'm, I live in Ward Nine or Ward Ten, whatever. I was definitely a bit confused and I feel like I'm learning a lot about what the priorities are, are here. When I heard there was going to be some legislation about aggressive panhandling and nuisances, I was really, really glad because I walk around, you know, here and it's not only when you're walking, but you're driving too. And it feels like there's a, a constant, like, grabbing for my attention. Everywhere you look, there's signs and things, some of them are lit up over the highway and they're trying to get your money. They're trying to get you to spend your money on stuff. And I thought we were going to do something about it. Some of the property owners around here, I gotta say, they don't even have proper walls on their buildings. You must have seen it. It's, it's obvious. They have glass on the side of the building. You can look in and you can see all the stuff the shop owners are trying to sell with the price tag on it. I don't have a lot of money. They're constantly trying to get me to spend money. And meanwhile, we have a climate action plan where the biggest piece, the 60%, we don't know how, what to do with, we don't have a lot of plans for it, is my understanding, 60% of the greenhouse gas emissions coming from consumption. So I thought, here we're going to finally do something maybe substantial about the aggressive request for us to spend money unnecessarily on stuff that we're already buying more stuff than we need. So, all this stuff about, you know, trying to stop people, helping each other, where are your priorities? Why are you wasting time on this? Who allowed this to even be on the agenda tonight when we're trying to address things that matter and make a big difference? Thank you.
Thank you. Eric Jackson, followed by Chris McAllister.
Eric Jackson, I, if I died today, I know exactly why I was delivered to Eugene, Oregon, to meet this guy three days ago for today, right now. I very rarely would say, "Mike, great idea. Stop this crap." Like, absolutely, stop this dangerous crap. But he convinced me that that's what I should be saying tonight just by showing me a picture and saying, I actually said to him in the tent out front at the protest where the police just came and roused everybody at 9:30 and I had to go out and let them have it. And if anybody wants to pull up to the bus lane and just like, just don't do it at the 30 and the top of the hour because that's when the buses come. But other than that, if you want to drop off pizza or anything, we're happy to grab it out the window of your car until this passes or not. But with this young man that was delivered to me, Green Bean, I'm amazed because his suggestion is the answer. Mike, I ask you to amend the ordinance to both the driver and the panhandler. If the panhandler's foot touches the pavement, period, put it in as the element of the law. And then if somebody's playing in traffic, they both get a ticket. You're a minute, go.
One thing I'd also like to add very quickly is that most of the people here, when speaking of the homeless population, are speaking of it as if it is a crisis. I would like to make it very, very clear that there is a large percentage of homeless people in Eugene that have chosen that way of life because a corporate, profit-based lifestyle did not fit their personality, okay? And in whatever way that manifested, it created a falling out with the traditional routines of modern society. And, one last thing, if you do not want homeless people on Eugene, if you are willing to ban panhandling for that purpose, so obviously you want them out, give them back the camp on 99.
Thank you. Chris McAllister, followed by Leonard Stair.
Madam Mayor, esteemed council of Eugene, my name is Chris McAllister and I'm a Springfield resident. I am a witness of our ban in Springfield and I want to speak kind of to some unintended consequences. We lost our fill-the-boot activities after we found out that, hey, you can't just target one group of citizens for being unsafe while not considering the rest. Now, I'm not going to encourage you either way to make a decision on that. I just want you to think about the unintended consequences. We, in the shelter, take care of the people who do not have a choice, who when it is cold, we are their only options. We take care of people who have wounds, who cannot hold a job. We take care of people who are adjusting to meds, who cannot, cannot really conform to what we, who have been able to be housed, can actually work on. So if you want the panhandling to stop and the safety issues to stop, we need a day center, multiple places around town. We need places for people to safely be and we need to have engagement with our police officers be about solutions, not enforcement. These are just the comments from an outsider, but thank you for your service.
Thank you. Leonard Stair, followed by Mel Hite.
Councilors, I'm Leonard Stair from Springfield, currently serving as a city councillor in Ward Four. It's late, so I'll keep this short. When our city was considering its own ordinance of this sort, it was also presented as a safety issue. And the, as David Strahan pointed out, the city was unable to point out a single instance of an auto accident that had actually been caused by a panhandler receiving money or food out of a car window. The ACLU has never challenged our ordinance because there has not been a citation handed out for people who are handing money or food out of their car. And I keep hoping that I'll be the first cited so that I can be the test case. But I suspect that there never will be a citation handed out under this ordinance. Number one, because the city suspects that it won't stand up under a legal challenge. And number two, the ordinance has already exerted the exact effect that it was intended to, which was to exert a chilling effect on compassion and kindness in our city. So, I would ask that the councillors not repeat the mistake that our city has made. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mel Hite, is Mel still here? Yep, there we go. Mel Hite, and actually, Mel, you're the last one.
We have one more after me, so.
Did I lose track? Okay.
I thought there was 42, but just, yeah. Mel Hite, I just want to say, like, we try to teach our kids, like, my personal kids, my students, we try to teach them the right things. So, I try to teach them that if you do something good, like, people will follow in that and people will see your actions and pay it forward, right? So one of the best things that I pull off of, because it was so meaningful to me and my kids, was a time that we pulled up, it was on a freeway and there was a lady there and she looked pretty distraught and all I had to give her was water. So, my girls and I gave her water and as we were stopped there, the next three cars behind us came and gave her stuff. So, a good lesson for that, for our kids is that, you know, if you do something good, people are going to see you doing something good. So I don't see why we need to put a stop to that. Like, that was a very visual lesson for my kids. Also, I'm not really into sports, but I'm kind of excited that the Olympic trials are coming because it's bringing communities together. Like, there's a lot of people who are very excited, they're coming together, you know, they're doing all this awesome stuff. But I think what you guys don't see is that a lot of the money that's been spent as far as getting the people to come in and give us advice on how to beautify the city, right, get it ready for the stuff, is directly targeting the unhoused community. So, and also the fallout from what the Olympic trials are going to be, like, you guys need to look into that. Like, the amount of money that's going to be spent on that could house everybody. The amount of money that we're going to be in debt after that, it could house everybody. But, yeah, you're worried about somebody handing something out the window? It doesn't make sense to me. So, I implore all of you to look into this, okay? And it's not just, I mean, it doesn't make sense to me. Like, I appreciate what you guys are saying, but again, somebody else said it too, it was like, you're at a full stop when you hand things out the window. And I don't know of anybody who's gotten hit in those situations, so you need to look at that too.
Thank you. Tracy Jocelyn, sorry, I'll, come on up. I seem to have lost track of yours, but sorry to make you wait.
Hello, my name is Tracy Jocelyn. It's my 37th anniversary in Eugene. Kind of makes me native, okay. I live in Betty Taylor's Ward. I'm against the panhandling ordinance. I really like what Donna and Jen and so many people have said. We all have bills, costs, and needs. All people work to meet their needs. I will add that people in poverty can stand proud and know that they work very hard for everything they have and sometimes you have to go beg on a corner. Sometimes that's people's job. Sometimes that's why people wake up in the morning. Many of my friends panhandle. Please don't take away people's ability to survive. We are Eugene residents and we call for kindness. I was speaking with a friend, she wanted me to share this. If you ban flying a sign and such, there are going to be people with their needs unmet. People need to eat, sleep, and human stuff. If they take that away from us, what are we to do? Is it really going to be a crime against love and compassion? I don't get it. So, I heard Mike say that it's a hostile attitude in here for people that might be for the panhandling ordinance for all their reasons and I believe everybody has a right to speak, but I really can't stand the us and them. And it kind of makes me scared and we're all in this together and we're all one people and I don't want to fight with anybody. And I work just as hard as anybody with a nine-to-five. I always have, I always will. I'll stand proud, I'm poor, I'm a damn good person. And I would give my life to save somebody's child, no matter what their politics. So I'd like to lighten it up. And the roads are kind of crazy, so people do need to be, just slow down a little, people.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And that ends the public comment period for this hearing. I have Counselor Clark wanting to speak and Counselor Cyret, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate everybody's testimony. I wish it had been in an atmosphere of more mutual respect for one another, but so be it. Mr. Manager, two times tonight, somebody spoke about fill-the-boot. We ended that in Eugene, and I'm trying to remember, was it two years ago or three years
You know, I don't recall.
I've had four firefighters contact me and say that they were asked to stop doing that in Eugene because it was unsafe for them to be in the road. And, and so, I had a couple of them asking me, "How come we're not being consistent here?" You know, "I hope you do pass this," a couple of them said, "because the city already decided it was unsafe to have people doing that in the road and that's why they asked the firefighters to stop doing it years ago." And I just wasn't sure that all my colleagues were aware of that.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Cyret.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate hearing from everyone who came this evening to speak with us for this public hearing, especially our city council colleague from across the freeway. I am not going to be supporting this proposal when it comes before us for a vote. I believe it is an overreach of government authority to use our police powers in this manner. Our city attorney has offered this council a correct analysis that this ordinance has been drafted in a manner that does not violate the Constitution on its face. But it could definitely be found unconstitutional as applied, were we only to enforce it against people who are panhandling. For example, I can imagine a parent realizing that their kid has left her cellphone at For example, I can imagine a parent realizing that their kid has left her cellphone at home, and that parent drives to the bus stop on her way to work and hands the phone to their kid through the car window. This would be illegal under this ordinance, but it is unlikely we would use our police to enforce against that parent. In addition, based on the public input we have received via email about this proposal, it is obvious we are being asked to use the power of city and law enforcement to prevent people from using public spaces to ask other people for assistance. And since we have not been presented with evidence of a true public safety issue with people giving to other people at intersections, this is a proposal that is a pretext to achieve an unconstitutional purpose, and therefore I cannot support it. And I will offer more additional comments on this proposal when it comes to council for a vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Semple.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone who came and stayed so late and spoke to all of our issues. Thank you, Counselor Cyret. I could not have said that better at all. I voted to have this public hearing, and people were very surprised, because I'm not going to vote for the ordinance. But so many people had asked me to consider this, that I felt it was vital for us to listen, and I think that it is vital, and I'm glad we did. So again, thank you all for coming. I really appreciate it. And, yeah, let's keep some kindness going. And that means here, as well as out on the street. Please, just do this. Don't talk too close to the microphone. You make odd noises. Let's just be nice to each other so we can get things done, and stay kind. Thanks, and have a great night.
Counselor Taylor.
Thank you. Thanks to everyone, and thanks to the people who had the courage to speak for the ordinance. I think it takes some courage to do that in public. I've had many people tell me that they think this is a good idea, that it is a safety issue. There is a concern with distracted driving. It is not saying that people can't ask for money. There are many other ways to ask for money. There are many other ways to give money. As someone asked me, "Why do you want to stop us from giving money?" I said, "You can give to the mission, to Food for Lane County, to any of the churches that feed people, to people who are sitting on..." You're not always in your car. You can see people sitting on this, when you're walking down the street or in a parking lot. I remember seeing the same person at the farmer's market every Saturday, and no one said we couldn't give money to him. There are so many ways to help people, and the person who said, "Don't stop me from asking," when no one is saying you can't ask. You could have a sign that said, "Please give money to the dining room," and hold that up and let people see it. Maybe they would go do it. As for giving things to children from a car, I think that's really unsafe. I think, I can't imagine having my child stand there and handing stuff out. I would find a way to say, "Go to a certain place, and I'll meet you," or something, but I wouldn't advocate giving money to a child, having a child stand by the street and get something given to them. So I will vote for the ordinance, and I hope that it passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councillors needing to speak?
I also just want to extend my appreciation to all of you for coming and for hanging in there through the whole meeting, and I do ask you, again, to remember keeping this a civil place. Thank you for settling down a little bit as the meeting went on. This issue will come back to council for a vote in April, so we have a council break coming up, so it's not immediate. There's a little time. Thank you all, and that closes our final public hearing.